Okay, but I think you changed some issues in the ordinance at that time. Didn't you vote to change some issues? That's why I went back and redid it in the plain language.
So this would still be the second reading, would it not?
Yes, it would be a second reading, just with amendments. Yes, okay. Mr. DeVito.
I would move to place ordinance number 2158 as amended on its second reading by title only.
Second?
Second.
May I second it? Since it's amended and we have to roll call. We go through.
Actually, you'd be better off to, I know it's a burden, but they'd be better off since their amendiness, quite a bit of the language, would be to read it in full even though it's a second reading. That way, the actual wording of the amendment will be being voted on.
Okay, you want to, I'll withdraw my motion.
You withdraw it?
I'll withdraw your second.
Oh, there it is, okay. Yeah, I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, yes.
Okay, I will move to read ordinance number 2158 amended on it, no, no, that's not right. Yeah, uh, for the second reading of ordinance number 2158 amended.
Second?
Second.
May I second it? Roll call, just since it's amended for the first time.
Since it's, it won't hurt to do it by roll call.
But you need a second read as amended.
But it'll have to be read in full, the way it's.
Okay. Make sure we get on our ducks in a little here.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Balance.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad.
No.
Three one.
Yes.
Four one. Are you going to read it?
Doesn't have to be a time.
I can read it.
He can vote any time, but his vote isn't necessary.
This will be ordinance number 2158, and we need to read the entire thing. Good point. In ordinance amending section 2.44.09 regarding ambulance fees and related charges in the municipal code of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas has determined that section 2.44.09 of the municipal code shall be amended in order to regulate efficiently the charges for ambulance and related services. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs that section 2.44.09 shall be amended to read section 2.44.09 ambulance and related services. The fire department is authorized to assess the following charges for ambulance and related services in the providing of emergency medical services to the members of the public requesting in or in need of such services. Patients who are transported or assessed one of the following services plus mileage: basic life support non-emergency $400, basic life support emergency, I'm sorry, did I say emergency the first time or not emergency? Okay. Basic life support emergency $450, advanced life support level number one non-emergency $500, advanced life support level one emergency $600, advanced life support level number two $700, specialty care personnel $800. Charge per loaded mile is $10. Patients who receive advanced life support treatments but are not transported are assessed one of the following: advanced life support level number one no transport $200, advanced life support level number two no transport $700. Additional charges motor vehicle crash $200, out of area resident $200, waiting time per every half hour is $50, extraction is $200. Adjustments to accounts: all patients' accounts paid before within 30 days of initial statement date shall be discounted 10 percent. Accounts of residents on our tax-based service area accounts shall be paid in full when their insurance allowances are met. Accounts of residents of our tax-based service area who are not insured shall be paid in full when the Medicare allowances are met. Residents outside our service area shall pay full charges listed above except when mandated by federal or state regulations i.e. Medicare or Medicaid. Indigent patient's bills may be written off to the extent that the receiving hospital writes off that patient's hospital bill. This ordinance shall become effective of September the 15th, 2012. All ordinances or resolutions are parts thereof in conflict herewith or hereby appealed to the extent of such conflict. Each of the provisions of this ordinance are severable and the decision of any court having jurisdiction as to the validity of any provision shall not affect the remaining provisions. Call for a grant. Yes, sir.
Mr. Pettis, it looks like there's a missing, there's two items that weren't listed on here. One of them was the cardiac arrest.
That's the advanced life support level two.
Okay.
Charge.
And the treat no transport.
And that's the advanced life support level one charge. So just put it in.
Okay.
Common terminology, right? Like the codes.
Okay.
People out there can't hear, yeah, can't hear what you, what you said.
Repeat and repeat.
So the missing cardiac arrest, no transport charge is the advanced life support level two charge? And the treat no transport is the advanced life support level one no transport charge? All the same charges, I just made the definitions a little clearer in common terminology.
Okay.
Yes.
Just a couple tiny little housekeeping issues. The last sentence on the first page, there should not be, probably should not be a comma following thereof. That comma should be stricken. And on the last page, each of the provisions of this ordinance, comma, that comma doesn't really belong either, so it should be stricken. That's all.
Any further discussion? None of the above? Okay. This will be the, the motion to approve second reading?
Um, actually, we voted to approve the second reading.
On the second reading?
We just saw through.
Didn't need to vote.
Okay.
You moved to put it on the, now we need to approve.
Okay, uh, I would move to approve ordinance number 2158 amended on its second reading.
Second.
Do you voice vote on this one?
Can be.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Oh, sorry. Quick on the floor. Yes. Mr. Weaver.
To meet the deadline for effectiveness in the ordinance, you really either need to consider it a third time tonight, or you're going to need to probably attach an emergency clause at the first meeting in August.
Ms. Balance.
I have a question. I really hate to bring this up, but I'm going to anyway. This is an ordinance amending another ordinance, and when we look at state statute, one of the very few times when the mayor cannot vote to pass something is when we're amending an ordinance. Do I need to look it up?
Do.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure there are very few instances when the mayor cannot vote to pass something. I'm pretty sure one of them is when you're amending an ordinance.
Yeah. Get publication, make that publication 30 days before. Pass. Effectiveness.
Mayors, mayors, mayors.
Mr. Weaver, you need to answer that?
I do not. There are some very limited reasons.
I think that's one of them.
I'm not sure.
I hate to have to say that, but I think that's one of them.
Well, if it's the truth, then we need to deal with it.
Better to find it now than six months from now.
Okay, additional powers is 1443-504. 1443. I'm sorry, I don't have my fingers on it right now, but I'm almost positive that's state statute.
Well, without information one way or the other on this, I'd like to proceed.
Uh, maybe we should postpone this in that case.
Everybody counsel, where's?
It makes no sense to me why the mayor would abridge his powers on an amendment to an ordinance as, it makes no sense at all.
Perhaps, but I'm almost positive, I've read that in here, Mr. DeVito.
I almost don't care about the law.
Well, show me where it doesn't say that, then.
Prove a negative.
Right?
Well.
Like I said, I hate to bring this up because I'd really like to see this pass, but I'm almost positive that the law stipulates that one of the very few times that the mayor cannot vote to pass anything is when it is amending an ordinance.
Mr. Weaver, why don't you start looking at the three? Two eyes are better than one. Four eyes are good too. Move it down the agenda because this is the last open one, finish business.
Might, might be a good time to take a short break.
You've got your homework to do.
I know that.
I will understand the motion to. Second. I'm very sorry. You're welcome. We'll be back in recess. Ms. Balance, if you would please, would you tell your findings about the issue you brought up?
What was it? 1443-501, was that it, gentlemen?
Uh, yeah, I think it is.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
All right. We researched it briefly, and all we could come up with at the time is case notes under 1443-501 that said, "The mayor's vote cannot be used in amending or repealing any part of an initiated act." And Mr. Weaver clarified that as an act that had come forward by a vote of the people. So unless we find out differently when I speak to Mr. Schoen next week, or later this week, we are proceeding on the assumption that the mayor's vote is indeed appropriate in this instance.
Counsel understand that? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
All right, that puts us back to, there's no motion on the table, so need a motion to, yes, Mr. DeVito?
I would move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2158 amended on its third reading by title only.
Second.
May I second it? I believe we'll call it off this one.
Three two.
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad.
No.
Ms. Balance.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Three one.
Yes.
Four one.
All righty. I believe that is all we need to deal with on that one.
I want to read the ordinance 2158, an ordinance amending section 2.44.09 regarding ambulance fees and related charges of the municipal code of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Mr. Weaver, you.
I'd like to approve ordinance number 2158 amended on its third reading.
Second.
May I second it? Do you voice vote?
No. Third reading.
Okay, third reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Discussion, please.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, this ordinance is scheduled to become effective on September 15th. Could you, if you've already told us, could you remind me why we need to do a third reading tonight?
If I can explain. If you wait until your first meeting in August to do your third reading, that would transpire on August 13th. Publication is required for an ordinance to become effective unless it's passed with an emergency clause, so unless you're going to act with an emergency clause, you would have to publish it with 30 days' notice. To get it in the newspaper coming out might present a real challenge to get the 30 days in before the August 15th if you don't pass it until the 13th.
And why specifically, again, please, do we need to have it in place by September 15th?
We had discussed this previously to set a date. I'll let the assistant chief.
We have to do some working with the software that generates the bills, and it's going to take a little while to get that done. We'll need some lead time there until, and so to get it set up where we could have a date that that would happen gives us a point to plan on and have everything ready on that date. If we did it immediately and/or later, then that's going to mess with the way we do the building.
Okay. Um, let's say the scenario is that we pass it on Monday, the 13th of August, then it immediately gets in the paper. Uh, may I ask the press gentleman a question?
Sure.
If this ordinance was passed on August 13th, would it be possible for it to be in the newspaper and for the very next edition?
It's a Monday.
13, Monday, he comes out, Wednesday, we come out, which is, as always, 15, we come out always 16.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We don't actually publish ordinances in the newspaper. We post them in five locations, and there's extra paperwork that goes with it. So that's how that works. And as soon as the document is signed, then we fill out the paperwork, gets notarized, and it gets posted.
Okay, so feasibly, you could have it posted by the very next day, which would be the 14th, yes? If August 13th is the meeting, and that's a Monday, you could possibly have it.
It is conceivable that it could happen that way.
By the 14th, which would give 30 days, let's see, January, February, March, April, May, June, July, August, September. August has 31 days, so actually, that would give you the extra day. Would, would 30 days not be enough to get your system up and running as it needed to be in preparation for that?
Actually, that 30 days is a protest period in which initiated act, or the population can initiate a method to prevent it from becoming law.
Right.
So you're giving them then, again, three days where they know for sure it's going to become law if you do what you're saying. Or four, no, three days. If the clerk can get it properly posted in less than 24 hours.
Let's see. Okay, thank you for that information.
It actually gives the people more time to act and the fire department and EMS time to plan if you go ahead tonight.
I appreciate that because you know I don't take emergency clauses lightly, so this helps me understand why that could be necessary.
There will not be an emergency clause. We're just going to give it its third reading, then it has 30 days after publication, so there's no emergency clause.
Okay, thank you.
Any further? Okay, who will we?
James, excuse me, Mr. DeVito moved to approve 2158 amended on its third reading, and Mr. Berry seconded.
Okay. We're into roll call again for the instance, third reading?
Roll call, yeah.
Okay.
So that will be 12.
Please repeat the motion.
Mr. DeVito moved to approve ordinance number 2158, 2158 amended on its third reading.
Mr. Berry seconded.
And Mr. Berry seconded.
Thank you.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Balance.
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad.
No.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Yes.
Four one.
Okay. That takes care of that one.
Pretty much.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. Then, number 12 and number 13 under unfinished are postponed. Brings us down to new business. Number one is postponed. Number two, taxi franchise workshop date, motion to discuss.
I moved.
Your second?
Second.
May I second, floor is open. Yes, ma'am.
Um, Mr. Panal, of course, is out of town, and four people can meet on Monday, the 30th, at 10:30. 10:30, and Mr. DeVito can meet on a Wednesday. So we have one unknown, four yeses, and one no for that date.
Did you mean, Mr. DeVito, can I meet on Monday?
Correct.
Mr. DeVito, right, correct.
Okay. Wednesday's available for me.
Excuse me?
Wednesday's fine with me also.
Okay. Well, okay, so that, all right. When Mr. Panal gets back, I will ask him and let you folks know, and you can't meet.
I cannot meet on Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay.
It is also very iffy for me on Wednesdays. Monday would definitely be better for me.
Thank you. So as soon as I know what the sixth council member needs, I'll email.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm in this with Mr. DeVito, Ms. Lindblad's motion to do this. Is there a better time which is possible on Monday for Mr. DeVito rather than 10:30?
Uh, I can meet nights, but all my days except Wednesday are filled.
I could be available after 6:30 on Monday evening.
I could too. So all four of you could meet after 6:30?
Okay. When you leave at 30, right?
Yes.
Okay.
At 6:30.
Yeah. Will I send out a reminder, please?
I'm very proud of that.
Thank you very much.
Well, I would still really like to hear from the other two members.
Sure.
And then confirm that this works.
Okay.
Okay. Get everything in? Okay.
Yes.
Number three postponed, number four postponed, number five postponed, number six, it's deer hunt discussion. Are they still open? Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second?
Second.
Headed floors open.
Okay. Um, I had, oh, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I had two people call me in favor of the hunt. I had a couple of letters, which I think even the council people got, the other council people, against the hunt, the, and I had some people kind of neutral on it. Their biggest concern was that, one of the biggest concerns was that this thing is going to go on for five months, which I found out today is the hunting season. So we're going to have this thing going on for the entire hunting season, and there are a lot of people, especially some business people, who are really concerned about the length of it. Um, I also talked to the Arkansas Bow Hunting Association today, and, um, they make, their bow hunters go through a lot of training before they are allowed to carry a card from them. They have to go through extra training because it turns out that any hunter who has a hunting license can go out and use any kind of weapon they want. Somebody could say, oh, there's a bow hunt up in Eureka Springs, I've never used a bow before, but I'm going to go buy one and I can go up there and hunt. With the Arkansas Bow Hunters Association, they have to go through eight hours of safety training before they can get a license from them. They have to go through a test where they do two or three, three arrow kill zone so that they're, I mean, they're, they're, and I know to some people this is going to be really gross, but, um, so that the, if they're going to shoot a deer, they shoot the deer really fast, and the deer dies instead of the deer lingering or running onto somebody else's property. They check their records as far as police matters. They also check to see if they've had any infractions of game and fish, and if they have, then they don't give them a license. And what I see here is, I don't understand how a deer committee set up by the city who has no expertise on this matter at all can feel that they are capable of choosing hunters to hunt. And, you know, according to this article where, if I have it here, I don't know, but I think I can quote it without having it, where Earl Hyatt said, you know, oh, well, you know, we're going to pick them and bow, we'll check their background, and bow hunters, bow hunters are really conscientious, oh, here it is, the, let's see, "Participants in the year's spring hunt must have an Arkansas hunting license," which means they can use any weapon whether they're proficient in that weapon or not. That's not a quote, but the first part is. If they were born after June, January 1st, 1969, they must have a valid hunter education card, which means they have completed a hunter education course. That hunter education course does not include proficiency with a bow. Then he said that, um, people who hunt with a bow are very conscientious. Well, I would think if they're really, really conscientious, that they They check their records as far as police matters. They also check to see if they've had any infractions of game and fish, and if they have, then they don't give them a license. And what I see here is, I don't understand how a deer committee set up by the city who has no expertise on this matter at all can feel that they are capable of choosing hunters to hunt. And, you know, according to this article where, if I have it here, I don't know, but I think I can quote it without having it, where Earl Hyatt said, you know, oh, well, you know, we're going to pick them, and bow, we'll check their background, and bow hunters, bow hunters are really conscientious, oh, here it is. The, let's see. Participants in the year's spring hunt must have an Arkansas hunting license, which means they can use any weapon whether they're proficient in that weapon or not. That's not a quote, but the first part is. If they were born after June, January 1st, 1969, they must have a valid hunter education card, which means they have completed a hunter education course. That hunter education course does not include proficiency with a bow. Then he said that people who hunt with a bow are very conscientious. Well, I would think if they're really, really conscientious, that they would belong to the Arkansas Bow Hunters Association, because then they would be for sure certified proficient with a bow. And the deer, and then he goes on to say the deer, or someone does seem here, the deer committee will choose 15 hunters initially. I don't know, you know, there's people that don't want this thing to go on for 15 months. A lot of people said, that called, said that this is not at all what was talked about in the beginning. It was going to be a much shorter hunt than this. And there's some people that are, you know, really, really upset. And when I talked to the man at the Arkansas Bow Hunters Association who brought up, if a deer went onto somebody else's property, you know, then you call game and fish to come, or you call the police department, but does this mean that people who don't want deer hunting on their property are going to have to stay home, you know, the entire time this hunt is going on, so that in case a deer comes onto their property, they can call the game and fish or call the police? And it seems, even though I haven't been able to get an answer for this, that every person who doesn't want the hunt on their property is going to have to go around and mark their property. And I think that's a big burden to put on people that don't want this hunt. And I'm curious, at this point, how many people have signed up for the hunt?
15. That's what we allowed, 15 hunters.
15? No, no, no.
Oh, you mean property owners?
I mean property owners.
About 40.
40 have signed up for it.
Yeah, we've been getting phone calls this week also.
Okay, so out of a population of over 2,000 people, we have 40, 40 property owners who have signed up for this. And as far as I can see, the burden is on everybody else to mark their properties so that the hunters won't come onto their property. So, because that's a big question that I never got answered, is how are these hunters supposed to know where the property lines are? They're not marked. I mean, my property's surveyed, but I don't have big markers saying where my property is. And it's definitely a concern of some people who do not have a lot of property around their houses, but whose neighbors have signed up, that, you know, they're going to have a big problem with this. So those are some of the things that were brought up and some of the things that I found out this week about this hunt. And, you know, I think that if this hunt is going to happen, it should, and it's too late now, but I think any hunt that happens in this town, if one happens, should be under the auspices of the Arkansas Bow Hunters Association and not under the auspices of a commission appointed by the city council where those people have no expertise, because the Arkansas bow hunters have done hunts in quite a few cities. And we don't have anybody here that has any expertise on this at all. And in fact, we didn't have anybody on the commission that I can determine that has expertise in setting up a bow hunt in any city in Arkansas. So.
Ms. Balance.
I've received quite a bit of input on this issue in the last few weeks. I've actually been quite surprised. A lot of phone messages, several emails. And people have been very eloquent and very passionate, and I've appreciated that. And there's been some people who are very much in favor of this hunt, and there are some people who are very much opposed to this hunt. There are some people who are opposed to having this hunt in September and October and feel it would be better to have this hunt, say, from the first week, a whole week in January to just before Valentine's Day. And some people think that that would be a good compromise. So it's really, it's, you've got to be Solomon in this court right now and kind of decide how you're going to split up the baby and who you're going to make happy and who you're not going to be happy, because no matter what we do at this table regarding this, some people are going to be happy with it and some people are not going to be happy with it. So that kind of puts us in a really hard position. And do we follow our hearts? Do we follow what the people tell us? And when the people are telling you nearly equally with probably just a few more people opposing it than in favor of it, where do you draw the line? How do you, how do you make all the people happy? Well, obviously, we're not going to make all the people happy no matter what we do. So with that in mind, at this point, I would move that we go ahead and allow the hunt to proceed under the committee's recommendations.
Any further? Mr. Berry, you're on the committee. Any input?
Well, there's a motion there, and I'll second her motion, because, I mean, I think, contrary to Ms. Lindblad, we had two people who do have expertise in hunting and bow hunting, and that's myself and Earl Hyatt. And we went through a lot of the pros and cons, and as Ms. Balance said, it doesn't matter what we're going to do, we're going to make some people unhappy, and we're going to make some people happy. I had, on my phone, I had one lady call me up that was very much against it, and in fact, more or less said, made reference to my race for state representative and said, if you vote for this, I probably won't be able to vote for you for state representative. Which, you know, I mean, and I probably have some people who said if I vote against it, they wouldn't vote for it. So it's going to be, you know, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. My vote tally was just about a 3-2 in favor of the hunt. There were concerns about the length, but again, you know, we went through this, a lot of these same issues in the committee. And we also referenced too that some of the concerns that people had, and one of the articles that we discovered from the game and fish, that in the 10 to 15 years of them having urban hunts, there had never been anybody injured or hurt. And as far as I know, in the reference of the last 50 years of hunting in Eureka Springs prior to 1996, there's never been anybody hurt or injured or any animals. But that, again, I don't know whether there's any records to that. But I, people, I have to remind, you know, there was hunting prior to 1996 and through here, and until one of the council members allegedly found an arrow on her porch, and she lived up on top of the mountain. So I'm not sure how the arrow got there, or if it did. But anyway, that instigated this whole hunting ban. So, you know, it's, I think we're, we may be making mountains out of molehills. I understand the concerns. Understand there's a lot of fear, because there's a lot of unknowns and what ifs, and we can, we can do the what ifs on a lot of different issues within the deer hunt. But again, I think the archery, earlier this week, I was driving home, and I literally came within 15 feet of five deer. And so I don't think this is going to be an issue. And I think the whole point of this, as many of us, well, a few of us anyway, and I know the mayor, one of our good friends was killed on a motorcycle by hitting a deer. And that, I still remember that. And he was a good motorcycle rider. He wasn't acting speeding or anything else. He was on his way home late at night. And we see accidents happening all the time in one respect for another. So there's a lot of issues there that the deer are causing, not only property damage, but damage and life safety issues. And that's a whole issue for this hunt.
Mrs. Bill.
Well, I've been in favor of the feeding ban from day one, and I'll stay with that. I think even some of the people who signed petitions in favor of a hunt are starting to realize that the feeding ban is, is having some effect. My concern right now, if, if the hunt is about the deer that are endemic to Eureka Springs, my point is that the drought is driving deer into the city that normally wouldn't be here. So, you know, they can't speak for themselves, so I just don't think it's fair that, you know, they, they become party to the hunt when, when, when climate conditions are driving them into the only places that have any forage right now, and that's in city. Personally, I think, I'm not in favor of the hunt, but I would be party to a compromise, and that would be eliminating the first part of the hunt and staying with the second part of the hunt. I think that would address a lot of the people in the community who, when you talked about a one-time hunt, I really don't think they thought about a five-month hunt. So I think in the spirit of fairness, that I would look to eliminating the first part of the hunt and just stay with that second part that's, what, late October, whenever. That's my thoughts.
Ms. Lindblad.
Well, first, I had a couple of questions, and one was for Butch and Earl. Do you belong to the Arkansas Bow Hunters Association?
I can't speak for Earl, no, and I haven't bow hunted in several years, so I haven't been a member of that.
Okay, because when you said that there's two experts on there, I said experts in setting up hunts in cities, not people who are bow hunters, because I wanted to make that clear. And the people that hunt with the Arkansas Bow Hunters Association have to go through all kinds of things, so I would think that they would be more experts than, than a committee with two people on it that, that did their, you know, that bow hunted. And as far as cars or motorcycles and deer, I think if we went through the records, we'd see that many, many more people have been in accidents with motorcycles with other vehicles than there have been with deer. In my neighborhood, and I have lived in my house for 38 years, I have never seen so few deer in my neighborhood as I've seen in the last year and a half. We used to have 16 to 20 deer, and now we have maybe two does and two fawns, maybe one other doe. The, I was just looking on here to see what the schedule is for this, for the hunt dates, they're here. When Mr. DeVito was talking about eliminating the first part of the hunt, the first part of the hunt isn't very long. I think the first part of the hunt is-
September through October.
Through how far into October? I know it's on here, I just can't find it. Do you know the dates?
No. Not October 15.
I can't hear you. I thought it started in September. 15th to October 7th. And then it starts again, oh, here it is, September 15th to October 2nd, and then it is from November 10th all the way through February. And what I've had people say is, you know, and being a business person myself, we're going to have a lot of business in this town all the way through New Year's. We have people coming to Eureka Springs. They don't just rush in for the leaves and rush back out of town. They're going to be here for Christmas parades, they're going to be here for Thanksgiving. It's always a big holiday. And frankly, you know, I think it's just insane, and some of the business people that called me said they think it's really crazy, especially people that have B&amp;Bs, to have hunters out there when they've got people staying at their places. So a compromise of eliminating the beginning part, although I think that's a very good suggestion, it's not that much, it's not that much time that there isn't going to be hunting, because November all the way through to February is a pretty long time, and that includes all of Christmas and all of Thanksgiving. And I brought this up before, this is the Chamber book, and there's, I didn't count them, but there's a whole big, long list of events that go on all during those months. And I personally am not in favor of this hunt, because I know that there have been studies done that have said the way that you affect a population of deer in cities is that you hunt around the outside. And a lot of people that called me said that, you know, pretty much it was said that this hunt was going to be a lot on public property rather than private property. And when it said one time, although I would say that the Ballad initiative was poorly written to restrict, that they had no idea that this was going to go on for so many There's activities all from November 10th. This goes all the way to December 15th, and then I don't have a new one for the rest of the time. But I know from having a business for 35 and a half years that people stay all the way over through New Year's. They stay that week between New Year's and Christmas. What do they really care about?
Okay. Just fill up the council, help to do with it.
There's a motion on the table.
To eliminate the first part?
No.
Oh, yeah, sorry, that is yours.
Please repeat the motion.
Ms. Balance moved to go ahead and allow the hunt to proceed under the recommendation of the committee and, recommendations of the committee, and Mr. Berry seconded. There hasn't been a vote.
Any further discussion? Last chance. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. I'm confused. Ms. Balance made it, and didn't she vote against it?
I did.
She didn't have to vote for it.
Okay.
Motion failed.
Motion failed? Okay. So what do we tell the public now? Because they're going to call, they're going to call, they're going to call, they're going to call. The 15 guys who have the permits are going to call. What do we tell them? I need an answer.
Well, as long as they don't come after me with their bows and arrows, that's okay.
Well, I mean, I can see some lawsuits being filed against this.
Oh, you can. Well-
Yes, ma'am.
Well, first of all, we could have lawsuits from both sides, and I think you said-
That's true, yeah.
And I think you said at a meeting recently, when someone was talking about a lawsuit on another subject, to just bring it on, so I don't think that's a factor.
Okay.
But, you know, maybe what we need to tell them is that, you know, the, we're not having the hunt till further notice.
Okay, that's what we'll tell them. Yes, ma'am.
And what about the signed permission slips? Maybe it's for 10, what about the signed permission slips we already have from property owners between the owners and the hunters, to already have quite a few permission slips for September 15th through February 28th? What should I tell them tomorrow?
At this point, the vote of the council is to not approve a hunt per the recommendations of the committee, unless there's a further action by this table. Right now, the hunt's off.
Okay, thank you.
That's what we're telling them. Council voted no. Number seven is postponed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we entertain another motion to change the date of the hunt?
No, sir.
To try to reach a compromise?
There's no hunt now. Vote to not to have a hunt. Well, the recommendations, if I understood, the, the motion right, it's the, it's under, well, even she voted against her own one, so it doesn't matter. She defeated her own-
The motion was to have the hunt as per the committee's recommendation.
Yes. And she voted against it.
There's not, there's no reason why the motion can't be made to have the hunt on a different date.
I'll let Mr. Weaver field this one, because my understanding-
Question.
Or to amend the, amend the motion, amend it somehow.
Well, I don't think it was appropriate to vote on this without the rest of the council here. We can revisit this. Now, in a two-to-two vote, who's the majority, and how do we revisit this? Actually, because there are two absences would count as no votes, there's actually a two-four. And it can be revisited on the motion of either of the two present.
I don't buy that. If they're not here to vote, they're, they don't have a vote.
Yes, they do.
It's two-to-two.
They would be counted as an abstention, which is a no vote.
They weren't here to vote. You can't, you can't vote in absentee.
Correct.
You can't phone your vote.
And they're negative votes.
If you're not here to vote, you don't have a vote.
To answer, to answer, councilmen-
To answer, to answer Councilman Berry's question, all you've done is say that it can't expire in the way that the committee has proposed. You've not ended the citizens' vote that a deer hunt can be held. You've simply done the same thing that happened a few months ago, when there was another proposal to use the bow hunters, and it was ended and went to the new committee. The citizens' vote still exists for the allowance of a hunt. It's still up to this table to figure out if and when and how that hunt is going to occur. You've not ended the possibility of a hunt. Stay tuned.
Okay.
Okay.
Number seven postponed, number eight postponed, number nine is animal, drone, vehicle route appendix. Motion to discuss.
So, move.
Second.
Second.
Who was open?
Do we have an appendix?
I don't know. Where is it?
Okay.
Oh, shit.
Appendix, appendix. Should someone open discussion?
I think it was, motion to discuss in second.
Was there?
Yes.
Yes.
Who made the motion, please? I did. Remember who seconded, please?
I seconded.
Thank you.
Somebody seconded.
What is this?
Ms. Ballance seconded it.
Do we have the, an appendix of it?
I don't have anything on this.
We have? What does it look like?
No.
Do you have to bring a copy of your...
I don't have one with me. I have one that I, I have one made up. It was my understanding, this is kind of just discussion to get, to see if we can do an appendix and how to do an appendix.
Mr. Weaver.
If I may, the ordinance that you passed on its third reading earlier tonight, creating the animal drone, or the animal drone as it was passed, will provide the equivalent of an appendix when the new applications are made, because it's going to require the route to be part of the application that's approved. Now, if you want to create set routes, that, then people have to obtain only those routes, you could do that. But in doing that, I think you're putting a restriction on the ability of someone to operate your franchise and probably making the franchises less valuable to all parties concerned.
Ms. Number?
All right, so you're saying that if people apply for the, for the franchise, that at that point, they'll put an appendix of what their routes and...
They, they will have to attach their route, as your ordinance is drawn, to their application, and when you approve that, that will become their approved route.
Okay, so that'll be approved then by the city council?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
When you grant the next round of franchises at the end expiration of the current round.
We have two franchises right now, yes? Two franchise?
You have three.
Franchises, two, two routes?
You have three.
Well, we have three, but right now, okay, right now, we know for sure that two are operating, and they have their specific route laid out. I think, if I'm understanding correctly, the idea behind this is to get at least those two on record. There are stipulations in the franchise that say the franchise routes shall not overlap one another without permission, blah, 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 things like that. So, I was under the impression that what we were trying to do right now was to get at least the two franchises that we know of that are running and operating right now, to get those routes on the record, so that when other people wanted to apply, if somebody else wanted to, well, we have actually three franchises left right now. But if, if we had the two that are under the auspices of this company, if we had those as an appendix, then that would be set out and, and anybody else would know that they could not cross over those routes, that they could not infringe upon those routes. But I thought that was kind of where we were trying to go with this.
That would be to create an ex post facto law if you were going to do that, because those routes, those franchises are established. You have all three franchises full, and any new applicant who would fill any of those three, should one of them end, or two of them end, or all three of them end, will have to provide you with their route when they come under the jurisdiction of the law that this council just passed. So, they will have to provide a route. What you're asking to do is not going to achieve anything that you already have not accomplished with your ordinance that you just passed.
So, so, so the routes that are established right now are on file, and we won't accomplish anything by doing this, is what you...
Anyone that would come in to get a new franchise, who would be affected by the routes as they exist, would have to provide their new route and would have to provide under the terms of the application that they're not crossing someone else's franchise route. They're already prohibited for future franchises. So, establishing the two or three that are there would not provide you any further protection of those routes this time than what you've already done.
So, my question is, then, if somebody decides, decides they want to do a third franchise, how do they know where the current routes are so they can decide if it's worth it for them or not?
You have three franchises right now.
Oh, we have three. Oh, all right, I thought you were saying...
They're, they're all full.
...home fulfilled. Okay, so, so when those come up, do they all come up at the same time?
Presumably, if none of them were to surrender their franchise, yes, they would all come up at the same...
At the same time, so the council at that time then could look at all the routes and say, okay...
Based on the applications that be presented.
Okay, so all their applications would come in at the same time?
They should.
Ms. Ballance.
May I ask from, input from our, our citizen?
You can.
Yes, please.
Um, I don't think we're looking at this from a protection point of view, as more of a, less confusion, so that the council has more availability to look at those routes and have them on access. All they gotta do is pull up an ordinance where now they have to go dig up three different files and hopefully get the most current map, and hopefully, you know, hopefully this, hopefully it's this, hopefully it's that. We're trying to get something a little bit more set in stone so that, you know, if another, I mean, there isn't provision in the ordinance, so that if it allows enough business, you can make a fourth franchise. So, that fourth franchise is then gonna have to come to the clerk and ask for all sorts of files and information to figure out where he can, where there's room left to make him a franchise. And so, if you establish where those current routes are, then somebody coming in or somebody with a current route wanted to add something to their route, which there's also that provision in there, you can always come to the commission and add for, you know, something to be added to your route, and at that time, the appendix would have to be amended. So, it's, we're not asking for protection, we're asking for less confusion so that, you know, future people can have a little easier access to that information and take a little more headache off of the person that's gonna be requesting that information.
Ms. Lindblad.
Aren't the routes for the three current franchises, do they not have maps attached to them of the routes?
Who's supposed to?
I mean, for me, you know, I don't, personally, I don't think that that's an extra horrible burden to put on a citizen to come in and ask to see the, the three franchises, because there's only three of them, and then for them to look at the maps. And because of FOIA, they can copy that and take it with them. And, I mean, a lot of people have come in and looked up things, so I don't know that it's worth us doing. Plus, the city attorney is telling us we shouldn't go ahead and lay these routes out in any other fashion. But that doesn't seem to me like it's, I mean, it doesn't seem to me like it's just a horrible burden to come in and that, you know, the clerk can pull it up, or it's, you know, they're in the file.
Ms. DeVito.
Well, I think the city attorney makes some good points. I don't want to make this any more difficult when we do have to revisit these franchises. All the city clerk has to have is a single sheet of paper with all three routes on the map. That sheet can...